University of New York's Board of Trustees is called to order. CUNY TV is transmitting the public sessions of this meeting live on the CUNY Board of Trustees website at www.cuny.edu/livestream. I now move that this meeting convene an executive session pursuant to Article 7, Section 105 of the Public Officers' Law to discuss matters pertaining to personnel investigations and litigation. May I have a second?
Second.
All right. We are in executive session. Will the board reconvene in public session? Let's now turn to the items requiring a vote today. Item number one, it's a resolution to approve the university's fiscal year 2025 budget request. I understand the chancellor and senior vice chancellor and chief fiscal officer, Chair Solomon, have a presentation. Chancellor?
Thank you, Chair Thompson. Who's doing the, okay? The technology side of the presentation, but as that goes up, I'm going to begin by saying that in the last two years, we've been very thankful for the support that we receive from the governor in the budget, also from the members of the Assembly and the Senate in terms of supporting many, many transformative initiatives that have been helpful to us to come out of the pandemic. So we want to highlight that support, also in a very difficult fiscal setting. Mayor Adams and the city council speaker Adams have also been very, very supportive in some of the operational costs and the capital projects in the last two years. So we want to show our appreciation to both of them. Clearly, we want to thank the board here for your support as we've navigated all these times, and we want to build on that momentum, on that goodwill. As you guys also know, we produce our CUNY Lift in New York, our strategic roadmap, that also benefited from the feedback and the insight of this board, and it provides a roadmap for how we feel that we can transform the university, better serve our students, become the most student-centered university in the country, or we can be that indispensable institution that we're all proud of and that everybody embraces in New York. So we want to be able to continue with that momentum for the last couple of years, and also from the consensus around a strategic plan. But we're also at a very challenging time, and we want to be acknowledging of that and put forward a strategy that would allow us to hopefully break away from that structural deficit. And I want to thank also again the board for their support as we have laid out some initiatives that will allow us to move ahead in that direction. In terms of the structural deficit, and I don't know if we want to move some of the slides, you know, the reasons for it, we've discussed with this board before. Enrollment declines, if you look at our enrollment from 2019, you know, before the pandemic, the community colleges were beginning to show a little stress on the enrollment side, but we were in growth mode. That changed with the pandemic, and between 2019 and 2022, we lost 20% of our enrollment, right? 45,000 students, and that is both a significant fiscal hit, but also an incredible loss in terms of the social capital and the opportunity that CUNY provides to the citizens of New York City. In addition to the enrollment declines, some of the assumptions under which our funding to continue to grow were based, one was based on ongoing enrollment growth, and also on the capacity to adopt a rational tuition plan, were also being taken off the table in terms of the landscape in Albany. We are fortunate to get the stimulus funding during and after the pandemic, and I think we've been very, very wise in the way that we've been able to stretch those dollars to better protect the university, but those funds are coming to an end at the end of '24. And as you know, those funds are not recurrent funds, right? So in terms of our ongoing fiscal health, that is one element that will not be with us as we move forward with the agenda of the university. So those are some of the elements that lead to the structural deficit. We've been active, and the chart that you're seeing now shows that we've been extremely proactive in navigating. In the last two years, we have sort of, we have decreased that deficit almost in half with some of the fiscal prudent measures that we have taken, hiring freezing, saving targets, and measures in that direction. We've been able to bring that deficit down, and we're very proud of that work, and we want to continue to do more in that, showing that we're capable of keeping our house, our fiscal house, in order. But we also need help as we move forward to eliminate the structural deficit really once and for all. I mean, another element that has been compounding the structural deficit, also the pegs that we received from the city as a response to the fiscal situation in New York City. There are some encouraging signs in addition to the measures that we have taken to control this cause, and enrollment seems to be on the uptick. But as you see, as I mentioned before, the enrollment deficit that we have is one that's going to take a while for it to be, you know, to fully compensate for the lost revenue that we have that has been gone over the last couple of years. But again, with your support and with some funding, from strategic funding, to invest in our work in the enrollment front, we are encouraged by what the trends that we have seen in the last year, trends that we have shared with the board in terms of the enrollment in the fall, the numbers for the spring, and then in addition to our very successful campaign to bring in students, seniors, particularly for New York City Public Schools, to apply to CUNY. And we look forward to seeing many of them on our campuses next fall. I want to stress that we, even though we've taken a number of very difficult measures over the last, you know, year and a half, we feel that we need to continue to do more, and we have shared with you a plan to continue to do that as we move forward to fiscal '24 and beyond. We need to continue to achieve saving targets across the system. We're also working more closely with some of the campuses that are in higher fiscal challenges. We have identified nine of them that we've been working with them to try to assist them, and we have a plan to work with them to be able to hopefully bring that deficit to an end. Additional savings targets and other measures with those campuses, and efficiencies. We have worked on some efficiencies over the last couple of years that have bring direct savings to the work that we're doing, and we want to do more. We think it's also consistent with the vision when the university system was created in terms of being more efficient, and we have not quite taken advantage of every opportunity in that front, and that goes from better procurement reforms on our end that will bring savings, share services, and the things in which it doesn't make sense to be duplicating services all across our different campuses, all across the system, savings on leases and things of that nature that we have taken. We want to continue to do more on that front of efficiencies around areas of IT, which is both something that we need to do in terms of being on the forefront of cybersecurity measures in a much more centralized and efficient way to produce our IT support to our campuses, and additional efficiencies also on the academic side, on elements, for example, of better use of the enrollment in our classes, things that we've seen some of our campuses do that we think that we ought to be doing, which allow more consistency all across the system. So we have those saving targets in place moving forward, but we also have a critical investment in our collective bargaining costs. Part of the collective bargaining costs were some of the reasons why, and again, the assumptions as to how that was going to be covered, that have led us to where we are with the structural deficit, and so we need the support to be able to really support our most important talent, which is our people talent. And I think that you've heard our chief operating officer and our CFO mention that 85% of our costs are people. And so that investment in our collective bargaining costs is really an indispensable element as we try to move the university forward, and a piece to be able to eliminate the structural deficit along with the reforms that I mentioned early before. We also, in terms of the budget request, in addition to asking for those critical investments in collective bargaining costs, we're asking for a funding floor, which was established last year for our community colleges, you know, to stabilize the finances of the community colleges. The funding there is per FTE, and if we do that with schools that have lost significant enrollment, we will put them in a particularly ongoing bonus situation, so that flooring, which was agreed to last year, I think is incredibly important as particularly the enrollment gains that we've seen in the fall and the spring have come in that sector as they continue to increase our budget requests. You will see also cover some increased OTPS costs. Everybody's talking about inflation, the cost of doing business has increased for all of us, building rentals, and energy cost. So those are some of the key elements of that budget request, which is $429 million. We have a programmatic request also, which is centered around the main goals of our strategic roadmap, which is additional investments in enrollment, transfers, and online education. That goes back also, not just to our mission, to the things that we need to do, but also as a way to get our fiscal house in order and be able to bring back a number of the students that we have lost, investments in student success, career engagement, advising student well-being, the things that speak to, again, not just our mission, but also to retention as we try to get those students who come into our campuses to stay with us and graduate and achieve their dreams, and investments also in research, the medical professions, STEM fields, and our medical school. Finally, we are also adding investments on two critical areas to make all these things work, which is the investment in our facilities. We want to continue to push for the state of good repair, to continue making investments so our campuses are in the best conditions possible for our teaching, for everything that happens in our campus, the work that we do, but you also know our campuses serve New York City in a variety of ways, let it be as polling stations or places where people meet, cultural centers, all of that. So we want additional operating support and capital support to continue to invest in our information technology changes that we have moving forward, and finally, some additional funding for our energy conservation projects, which I think is a goal that everybody in this board embraces. So those are the overall themes of the budget request. You have the details in front of you, and happy to answer any questions, and we have our COO and our CFO here to answer any more questions that you might have in detail.
Any questions?
Just, I think on slide five of your presentation, these five categories, just what are the big numbers behind that? Is the 429 in those five categories?
Sure, so I can pull up this last slide here, which has a breakdown of all the numbers. So in the programmatic side, state request there is 58.5 million, so some of the things that the chancellor covered on those five buckets will be covered under the state request, but also we're asking the city of New York also for funding on the programmatic request. On the next row, you see the collective bargaining costs there. The state request is 184.2, and in the city side, that's covered in their financial plan in the labor reserve, so there is no additional ask there. And then you see in the other mandatory cost increases, the things the chancellor mentioned, like the building rentals, energy, et cetera.
The city picks up the collective bargaining costs for the community colleges?
Correct.
And that's in their plan right now?
That's in the labor reserve, correct, in their financial plan.
So it's not part of the reductions that they announced?
Correct.
Okay.
Other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions? All right, let me do this because we're going to have a testimony, but let me first then, let me move item number one. May I have a second for that?
Second.
All right. In discussion, I know that we have the president of PSC, James Davis, who's with us, who's going to bring testimony.
Good afternoon. Where would you like me?
There's a chair right at the end, right here next to my table.
Thank you. Very good to see you all. Thank you, Chair Thompson, and thank you, Chancellor and trustees, for the opportunity to speak with you this afternoon. I've served as the PSC president since spring of 2021. Some of you know I'm a faculty member at Brooklyn College, and this is the first time that I've requested an audience with this body, and I do that because I have real concerns about where we are in the budget, and I wanted to speak briefly about the budget proposal and related matters, including the enhanced savings plan that were referenced before at the nine colleges. It seems to me that the university is really at a precipice, and I want to, I want to take a minute to talk about a few factors. One, the budget request that you're voting on today scales back significantly from the preliminary budget that was circulated in the summer, and I think it would be prudent to reconsider that scale back and, in fact, to introduce additional requests for the programmatic needs. So we were very encouraged to see the collective bargaining costs included in terms of building up the labor reserve with additional state and city appropriations. At the same time, there is an appearance anyway of funding the collective bargaining costs by reducing the programmatic requests out of current programmatic needs, and it's clear that really both are needed. The biggest impact of the revision to the budget has been to drop two-thirds of the programmatic increases that were requested in the preliminary document, and I just have concerns and questions about scaling back. On the scale that's been done, the enrollment and retention requests dropped from 20 million in the preliminary to 6.7 million. Graduate education request was zeroed out after having been initially introduced at 15 million. Academic and career advisement dropped from 34.1 million to 18.5 million. Workforce skills and employment outcomes from 25.6 to 14 million. Facilities maintenance and enhancement dropped from 30 million to 10 million. STEM-focused donor matching and STEM majors funding, both of which appeared as $50 million requests in the preliminary, were both zeroed out. IT support dropped from 15 million to 4.8, and the restoration of the peg cuts also deleted from a 61.5 million request in the preliminary. On the mandatory costs, note that the salary increments are maintained and fringe has been increased slightly from the preliminary document, and the two big changes under the mandatory costs are the collective bargaining and this cancellation of the peg restorations. Now, to me, and you know, I want to say a little bit more about this later if time permits, the cancellation of the peg restorations to us is like a surrender. It's just a surrender to the pegs, and that's not what we need right now. The collective bargaining now has a number attached to it, and I'm not clear about what that 184.2 million represents, but I know that it's clear that there isn't a necessary opposition between funding collective bargaining costs and funding programmatic needs. I'm assuming that the collective bargaining that's represented in the document is not just for the professional staff congress, but for other unions, and I'll note that when other state agencies were settling their contracts in this round with UUP, with PEF, with CSEA, with Council 82, they all received pay bills for the settlements, and those pay bills were introduced by the governor, and I think we should also expect the same for our settlement. The SUNY pay bill was $282 million, retroactive one year and prospective into the current fiscal year, and we assume the same for CUNY. The collective bargaining, the university has yet to make an economic offer to the union, so we understand the 184.2 million dollar figure doesn't represent an agreement, but we consider it a baseline to be supplemented by a pay bill, which we would expect in any final settlement. We would expect to see full funding from the city and state in addition to the programmatic budget, and thus it's short-sighted to reduce the programmatic requests so severely. So my request for the board would be to reconsider the reductions in the programmatic requests from the preliminary to the proposal you have before you today. On the additional cuts to the savings plans, to the nine colleges, we just learned about this last week without communication to the union, but we understand that after having sought reductions of 127 million, 127.8 over the past two fiscal years, now these nine colleges have been directed to identify additional savings, and I just, you know, I got to CUNY in 2003. As somebody who's been here for 20 years, as an advisor in my department for a long time, as a president now of a 30,000-member union, I have to say that these additional enhanced savings plans, cuts really, would be harmful. They will be harmful on the campuses, and they mean layoffs, they mean adjunct faculty will be non-reappointed, and I know that in technical terms, that's not a layoff because there's no presumption of continued employment, but they're going to need layoffs, and on a spreadsheet, that's going to equal savings. But those are my members, and those are your employees, and they will not be able to pay their bills, and in some cases, they will not be able to maintain health insurance. Those cuts are also going to mean increased class sizes, and they are going to mean reductions in the number of course offerings, which really raises the question of student retention, which I know is of paramount importance to everyone in this room. So I feel that actually the cuts should not be implemented, and they should be prevented from occurring, and I couldn't help but notice there's no corresponding savings in anything that I've seen that is demanded from other areas of the university's operations. I didn't see anything about how the central office would contribute to the savings, maybe I missed it. I didn't see anything about how the fiscal '24 allocations of $121.8 million to the central office operations would also, you know, contribute to the savings. Anything about the OTPS budgets here would contribute to the savings. Nothing that I saw about potential furlough days, so, you know, I don't see any skin in the game from the administration that is asking for the savings from the colleges that have frankly suffered immensely from the savings to date. On the pegs, we don't see any public engagement on the pegs, and we are getting pegged and pegged like moths to a corkboard, and we need to see a public engagement from the university with the question of the continued pegs, 5% in the November plan, five additional proposed in January, five additional beyond that, and my members don't hear anything from this administration about the pegs. So it raises for them real questions about the leadership when you're not fighting, apparently, publicly, within every possible arena and with every possible tool that's available to you. We think when it comes to whether it's a city budget or the state budget, now is the time to make a public-facing campaign, not only for you all, but also to allow the presidents to be part of a public-facing campaign, to say, not the governor is terrible, the mayor is terrible, but here's what CUNY actually needs, to turn them loose to do that work. Our members don't see that happening, and it diminishes their faith in their leadership. The last thing I want to say in relation to the collective bargaining costs, we haven't had any bargaining sessions with CUNY since October 26, and it's not acceptable. We had, I've talked about this with Vice Chancellor Gloria, she's not here today. I fully understand that there needed to be a pause in the contract negotiations. She suffered a terrible injury, I don't begrudge that, but we have had no communications from the administration beyond that we can't meet with you. We feel that that's insulting, not just to us as the union, but also to the members, the faculty and the staff that we represent. After having had nine productive bargaining sessions since June, to be told to wait or not told, right, to be in a holding pattern when we all want to move forward, we all want to make progress on a good collective bargaining agreement. Those are my remarks. Thank you.
Just a few things, and normally testimony, it's not a discussion of back and forth, but first, thank you for coming in. Number two, we would love to work collaboratively with you in budget moving forward. I mean, as I said, I think that we're looking at, and as I said, collaboratively, we're not always going to agree, but at the same point, it is important we are all trying to move in the same direction. So looking forward to that collaborative work along with you, and I'll make sure that we reach out to you in the near future to make sure that happens. I'm sure that we've heard you on the labor negotiation and as far as moving forward soon on that, and last but not least, I would say that the one thing in this difference, we have not had collective bargaining included in our budget since at least 2011, which is a major change, and hopefully, you know, we're looking forward to that being included this time, because if not, things would be disastrous. So I understand that, you know, we can hope that, and you point in other places, that the same point hasn't been included in our budget in over a decade. So that is an important thing, and again, let me thank you for coming in and speaking to us today. Thank you for the time. Thank you. Any other discussion on this topic? Yes?
I have a question. The difference between the first budget presented and the budget we have now is different, is very apparent. I would like to know what prompted that, the reductions in some of these budget lines?
Sure, I'm happy to address it. I think, Salamatu, we are facing the structural deficit. We are doing what we can on our own end to be able to institute savings plans, to be able to bring the structural deficit down. We try to tailor the programmatic requests into areas that can promote strategic growth, enrollment retention, to promote student well-being, and, you know, a raft of other university priorities. Certainly, we want to make sure that we continue to invest in those, and as you know, thankfully, and we thank our partners in the state legislature for one-time funding, and also the governor, of course, that have really helped us with some of the transformative initiatives to really invest in enrollment and retention. So we feel like there have been investments made, more investments being made, and the So we feel like there have been investments made, more investments being made, and the programmatic requests could certainly supplement a lot of the actions that we're already taking. At the same time, while those are all noble causes and noble programs that the university wants to invest in, we have to also consider and grapple with the fact that our mandatory costs continue to increase, we need to support our talented and dedicated workforce, and that's why the budget request reflects the mandatory costs and expenses, not only on the collective bargaining side, but some of the rising costs that we've experienced through inflation, through salary increments, through, you know, rent steps and leases, all of the various things and operational costs that we need to pay for, we need to make sure that funding is keeping pace with that. So I think, you know, in totality, there was a lot of thought that went into it to right sizing it to the appropriate point where we think we can be successful and achieve fiscal stability for the university.
So are we saying that we know that the reduced number is an attainable budget, like we are reaching for something more attainable now, and that is something that would help with the structural deficit, and that's why the numbers were brought down?
I think overall, we have to recognize that certainly, for example, at the city level, we know we have to grapple with the programs to eliminate the gap, so there have been cuts, and the fiscal realities there with their budget situation. I think at the state level, certainly, there have been signals that there needs to be restraint based on the overall fiscal outlook. So I think we are optimistic that what we're putting forward, we can achieve together with our state partners and our city partners through a collaboration, and really the entire university community coming together to try to achieve what's in the request. So we are optimistic with what we are putting out there.
Any other questions or comments on this?
So I know we're constantly looking at the gap, and that's what we're focused on, so I just wanted to turn a little bit towards the revenue side of things with enrollment and all the positive news that we've had this fall with 400% increase in applications, and now we just need to convert that into actual enrollment. And I was just looking at the plan for enrollment and retention, and it's a very good plan, and so I wanted to commend the team on all of this. I was just missing, I think, one thing was just the emphasis on how do we recruit out-of-state students more, because it seems like the competition for New York in-state students is already saturated, it mentions there's over 100 other competing institutions for New York students. And when you look at, like, SUNY and their out-of-state tuition, for example, it seems like, at least for the Albany, Binghamton, Buffalo, they're at $27,000, and we charge $18,000. And so I feel like there's some room to really close that gap a little bit, because I feel as if, really, selling New York City is kind of where we should be focused, and so this emphasis on, I just want to understand a little bit better if we have a robust plan to recruit more from out-of-state, and also, at the same time, while we're doing that, it also seems like we don't have CUNY on Common App, for example, right? Is it part of the Common Apps system yet? It's not, right?
No, but that's part, if I can respond to both parts of your question, let's just.
I just wanted to finish, so that's all kind of linked together, meaning if we are going to recruit from out-of-state, we need to be on the Common App, and if we are recruiting from out-of-state, which includes international students, and I know several campuses over the years have partnered up with recruiting companies, and I hope those are, I don't know the outcome of it, but I'm hoping that that's where we're getting a robust, you know, outcome in that area as well, but just really, Common App, close the gap, recruitment on state, out-of-state students, and that would be the plan.
A couple of thousand dollars. It is clearly part of the agenda to invest there. We made the first push in this year in our backyard and expanded, right, with the additional outreach to the schools that were not part of the New York City public schools. I mean, we were more aggressive outside of New York City and also in parochial schools and non-publics, right, which was something that we had discussed with this board. So there's plans, and I'll let sort of Wendy in a second maybe go in more depth in that space, to not go to that idea of out-of-state. The Common App is part of that equation. That requires some technological changes too, that we are sort of putting in the queue. So all that is sort of like the next phase of some of the things that we hope to do, and then I'll let.
Before you do that, because I'm not sure how many years I've brought that up, as far as Common. We are going to attempt to do.
Yes, 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 I'm happy to address this. I mean, I think the most important thing I can say, hopefully, if you believe me and I can give you some specifics, there is a comprehensive plan to increase enrollment at every level from every source, and of course, this is year one. The number-one way to increase out-of-state enrollment is through the delivery of online programs, and as you know, that's still in its infancy, and yet this year, we know we had about 2,000 folks that we didn't have last year. So that's with no marketing and a late launch, so hopefully, that is just literally a trickle of what may be possible in that space. The second, the Common App absolutely is in the queue, part of it, you know, part of the question is whether that goes in front of the automatic admissions that we did this year, or it goes after. Right now, to do the Common App requires literally every single application to be manually entered into our system, because those two systems do not communicate. So it sounds really easy, like it's, well, we just accept the Common App, it actually doesn't work that way, and so absolutely, it is on the list, and in fact, I just sent an email today asking for an update on where we are on that, so I'm happy to report back in the next session. And one thing to explain, if you're wondering, well, why not attract those out-of-state students to come in for residential experience? It's very hard for us to do that with the limited amount of dorms that we have, you know, it's a very different proposition. What's that? Yeah, and we are actively, and I'll turn to my colleague, looking at ways to increase our housing capacity for students who have the ability to afford it. As you know, no simple thing for our students to be able to afford housing in New York City.
Yeah, and under the chancellor's direction, we have undertaken to look at dorms system-wide. We're doing an analysis, and the study's being finished right now, and I'm going to be getting a presentation, and basically, what we're looking at is a couple of things. Number one, what the marketplace is for us, what's the demand, and then build into that demand, the work that Wendy's doing on trying to make sure that we're, those students that we bring from out-of-state, that we're sort of capturing them. So that's, and then we're also looking at this whole issue of affordability, and looking to see, can we come up with something that targets Pell students, right? The chancellor made it very clear that we have to figure out a way to try to accommodate that, and so we're also looking at that, and we're going to be very happy to come to the board and present that plan, and it's all going along the lines of the work that Wendy and her team are doing on the enrollment side, so we can properly align all those things. And we think we brought to the board last year a couple of long-term leases for dorms. We're going to be bringing to the board some additional, but we want to actually bring to the board an analysis of what the actual demand is, and then build in there. Those two components, affordability and the out-of-state piece of it. So that, literally, the study's being completed this, the end of this month.
And what about closing the gap of the tuition between SUNY and CUNY out-of-state?
We can have a conversation about that, I mean, the, and that's probably something that we're going to bring separately to the board at some point, we want to remain affordable no matter where the students come, right, that's sort of part of our mission, and, you know, there might be also some advantages of not being exactly at that price point to be able to attract some students too, so those are some of the things that we'd like to sort of bring to your attention, but it's clearly something that we're looking at.
Professor Vazani, and then Salamatu.
I'd like to thank you for allowing the PSC to speak here, but it highlights the sort of faulty process employed this year. We had a budget request on the Finance and Administration Committee Agenda in June, and here we are rushing it through in December in a special meeting, when typically it would have been handled in November, there would be plenty of time for feedback from members of the community. We had a rushed meeting with three days' notice, and no opportunity to modify it. And I would have loved to have a crack to say, "This request reflects our values." And when our values show that we're cutting significantly in key areas from June, that's not a very good statement on what we value. I understand the constraints of trying to find a package that is actually affordable, but with a 20% request of increase to the state, I don't actually believe that. I think we should have asked for 30% and shown what we care about, then asked for 20%, when realistically, maybe we could get 10. So I just want to lodge a, I want to call it a complaint, but a little frustration with how this played out in terms of timing. I think it could have been more on the regular order of things.
Salamatu, and then.
To piggyback on that, I think sometime to probably discuss some more, having some modifications to this may have been useful, but to go back on the conversation about in-state, out-of-state, and international students, if that's something that we're doing, I think it's a conversation about having affordable tuition, but also the resources to serve these students, because these three student populations have different needs in terms of student support services. So if that's the direction we're going to look at, we're not only looking to attract these students, but also support them. I've said this before, the resources available for international students are not up to par, so if that's an initiative that CUNY will particularly invest in, I think it's important to look at all the ramifications of that.
Sandra, and then.
Just wanted to thank the chancellery for preparing the report for the trustees, but that this is so critical to the foundation of CUNY, and although the reality of the concerns that we have with the budget, just having an opportunity and the time with which to review it and get other recommendations that could be helpful here, possibly, you know, could be something that could help us with where we need to be. And just one item that I briefly saw, given this report from Friday, was giving.
Those are two different things, so I wouldn't.
Okay, and just the budget item.
This is specifically about the budget request, and there has been a number of briefings and discussions with us over a period of weeks about the budget. The document that you're talking about is something entirely different.
All right. With this, though, mention that the, that facilities, the budget, if, I just wanted to make sure I heard it correctly, that it went from $31 million to $10 million, or is it that there's a $10 million difference? And what is the understanding of what is being, what is being changed here, given the fact that we hear so often about the importance of the capital improvement and the maintenance that is so much needed at the colleges?
Yeah, Sandra, two different things. One is the request for the operating part of the capital budget, and another one is the capital budget. So the reduction, we made a decision that on the operating side, all we needed was that amount of money in order to be able to manage the capital side of the budget, so that's really what that is, is two separate.
And how much is the capital request?
Capital request is $1.79 billion for this year, and the overall plan over five years is $8.8 billion.
Any other questions? Yes?
I want to go back to what Kevin said earlier, I think it was talked about a little bit, and that is the out-of-town student, and the advantage of having out-of-town students attend CUNY, because they pay a premium, and I understand housing is the issue, but if you compare what we would charge for housing as compared to some of the metropolitan schools, colleges, universities, it's a bargain. And so I think that New York City is the attraction, and I think that if we could increase the amount of out-of-town students coming to our system, I think it would be financially advantageous, I believe so. I don't know if I'm mistaken on that, you can correct me, please, if I am. Yes, no, maybe?
Yes.
Yes, why?
Of course, absolutely. It's not that, there is a plan to reach all of these different markets, it's not that there's one or the other, or we've chosen, it's that Phase One, the first year, was within and going for students within New York City that not currently within, or not New York City, students who are in private schools. So, you know, we're expanding, we have a national marketing campaign, it's not, I'm a little, I want to be clear, it's not that we're not doing that, we are doing that, it's just.
I believe you are.
That is a challenge to that.
I'm just endorsing it, saying that that, I think.
Got it, got it.
Wonderful, so I'm not saying questioning it.
Trustee Clark.
Okay, I just wanted to follow up on discussions that we already had. We looked at campuses and facilities within CUNY, where we could have done some building, mainly was to stabilize our own investment and our own budget cuts. Now, this is a new idea, I think that since we already voted on the first thing that we could do the building, what about now doing it so that we can attract students, both from out-of-town as well as international students? We voted on it, and it passed, so unless somebody did something funny, since I'm away, I will look at the papers again to see what we voted on, because we looked at places in where we could build.
Correct, and I think that they are well along in that process, at least with First Project, I don't want to get into it and preempt, because it will be coming to us in the near future, as far as, and a lot of that, it wasn't just building for us, it was maximizing our real estate and maximizing things like air rights, so to try and drive additional revenue for our students and for our system, that was kind of what that was. Comment?
Yeah, I understand that that was, but now that we have a new conversation going, that may well be the good reason for moving that ahead and bring students in.
So we, I mean, so we have, I mean, some of the things, I mean, they're not here because they're not part of formally of the budget request, but, I mean, we've talked about sort of ways in which we can be smarter in using our physical assets and real estate in ways that allows to be able to generate additional revenue, and then also address some critical mission items like housing, right? So we have a couple of things that we are sort of preparing to come to the board, which will hopefully be part of, A, bringing additional resources that, you know, that we need, but then also addressing some gap areas like housing and things like that.
I read in the Good Book, the whole, I come quickly, so come quickly.
Okay.
One last.
Yes.
Okay. Now, I think, understand that part of the budget process is talking to all the different stakeholders, so it is important to understand what probably the governor thinks, and what all the state legislators, their priorities, and what they are willing to fund is. So if that is correct, I think that this budget is, it looks safe, from what I'm hearing, right? Now, my question is, if it is true that this is a safe budget, and that this is something on the negotiation table, on all the different conversations that the state and the city are willing to fund, I'm looking at the other stakeholders here, the students, the student advocates, we're there during budget season, we do invest our time and our energy asking for all of them to fund CUNY. If this is a guarantee, do you even need us? That's the thing, because it looks safe. If it's safe, then do you need us? Do you need, because I understand the PSC is here too. Do you need the PSC to go out there? So I think at the end of this meeting and whatever it is, I would really love to have a conversation and see the different extent in which we do need all the different parts of the university and to which extent what we put on the table to get CUNY funded is needed. That's really where I'm going with this.
Two things. Number one, I would agree wholeheartedly, however, what, what I will disagree with in calling the budget request safe. It is not.
Okay.
And it is going to require work and effort and negotiation and discussion. And it's going to require all of us working together. It's going to require, you know, not just the, I mean, as, as, as we look, and this is a process that will play out over months. Because you also have to have, it's not just the state, we have the city. And we have been taking cuts. So I think there's just a lot of moving pieces here, a lot of moving parts. There, I wouldn't call any part of this right now, safe. So, uh, but I would agree that, yeah, we have to work together on this.
And I think that's what I wanted to hear, because from an outside perspective, not being in these conversations, it may look like it, that the university is comfortable with these low numbers. So I think this is important for us to hear, so that we understand that it is still work that has to be done here. It's just that probably the higher amount, the more work or the more risks that we're taking. But yeah, thank you.
Just one.
What's the percent increase on the state aid request? The, the percent increase on the.
Eighteen.
Eighteen, yeah. When was the last time we got an 18% increase from this, from the state? Ever?
No. Wait a second, let me think. Uh, never, okay. What is, I think you know the answer to that.
Not in my term. It never happened. Um, my only point is, it's an, this is, I would, if anyone thinks this is safe, we have, you have an extraordinarily high hill to climb on this request.
Yep.
With that percentage of an increase from this, from the state side.
Yep.
So I think we should all understand that that is, you know, it's going to be difficult to do that. And then on top of that, you have the city, which is proposing cuts and more cuts.
Correct.
Right? Which feeds off of what the state is going to do, right? Because the state is really not interested, generally speaking, not interested in backfilling what the city's, like, taking out. Right? Because then you're really not getting anything. All you're doing is, the state is backfilling, what the city's reducing and you're just treading water. So, just in the presentation, and it probably wasn't outlined as such, because I think it was just laid out here, as you said, which is just, you know, this is what we're requesting and it seems like it is, but this is actually a pretty extraordinarily high, uh, increase in a request from the state.
Any other comments, questions? All right, um, we have an item in front of us. I'm going to move to a vote on this. So all of those in favor of item number one, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Item one is approved. Um, wait a second. The Chancellor's asked the board to consider one additional, oh, to consider one additional resolution today. I'll ask the secretary to read the resolution for the record and we'll first vote to add the item and then take a vote on the item itself. Gail, could you read the resolution?
Yes, item two is a resolution to approve the engagement of Foley Hoag LLP to provide legal services and conduct an internal privilege investigation into certain allegations of breach of protocols relating to an investigation of research misconduct dated today. Whereas the City University of New York, the University of CUNY, is committed to ensuring the university's compliance with federal, state and local regulations and ethical standards regarding all aspects pertaining to the responsible conduct of research. And whereas, as a result of certain allegations of research misconduct made against a university faculty member as described in a certain letter addressed to the university from the United States Department of Health and Human Services, Director of the Division of Investigation Oversight at the Office of Research Integrity, the university convened a committee to investigate and review such allegations in accordance with CUNY's policy regarding the disposition of allegations of research misconduct. And whereas the University Research Misconduct Investigation Committee conducted an investigation and review of the aforementioned allegations and produced a confidential report regarding the same in spring 2023. And whereas, prior to the resolution of the matter by the university, came to the attention of the university that a breach may have occurred in connection with the confidentiality of the confidential report prepared by the Research Misconduct Investigation Committee. And whereas, as a result of an alleged breach of the confidentiality of such confidential report, the university became aware that the contents of such confidential report and the findings of the University Research Misconduct Investigation Committee may have entered into the public domain through one or more publications. And whereas, the implications of a breach of confidentiality of the report prepared by the University's Research Misconduct Investigation Committee could undermine the integrity of the investigation, as well as the findings and conclusions contained in such report. And whereas, it is the obligation of the university to protect the integrity of such academic research investigations in accordance with law and policy. And whereas, in accordance to protect the integrity of the university's academic research investigations and to determine if any breach of CUNY's policy regarding the disposition of allegations of research misconduct occurred, the university requires the services of a law firm to assist the university's Office of the Senior Vice Chancellor for Legal Affairs and General Counsel, otherwise known as the Office of General Counsel, to conduct a privileged internal investigation into the allegations of a potential breach of confidentiality of the university's Research Misconduct Investigation Committee's report. And whereas, the university issued a request for proposals from qualified law firms who could assist the Office of General Counsel in conducting a privileged internal investigation. And the law firm of Foley Hoag LLP met the published qualifications and was the successful respondent. And whereas, the Office of General Counsel is seeking the consent of the university's Board of Trustees to enter into a contract thereby engaging Foley Hoag LLP to perform certain legal services, investigations and analyses. And the Office of General Counsel deems reasonably necessary and appropriate with regard to certain allegations of breach of protocols relating to an investigation of research. Now therefore, be it resolved, that the university's Board of Trustees authorizes the Senior Vice Chancellor for Legal Affairs and General Counsel to enter into a contract for an amount not to exceed $1,250,000, which will have a term no longer than one year from the date of the contract with Foley Hoag LLP to perform, one, certain legal services, investigations, analyses and reports. And two, retain on behalf of the university such professional, academic and scientific experts as reasonably necessary and appropriate in consultation with the university to effectuate the same in connection with allegations of potential breaches of protocol of CUNY's policy regarding the disposition of allegations of research misconduct and the alleged potential breach of confidentiality of certain reports prepared by the university's Research Misconduct Investigation Committee. And that the Senior Vice Chancellor for Legal Affairs and General Counsel or his designee be and thereby are authorized to negotiate, execute, seal and deliver such contract and engagement letter. And that such execution by such duly authorized officer of the university shall be conclusive evidence of his authority to perform all such acts and to execute and deliver all such contracts, agreements, documents and instruments contemplated thereby on behalf of the university. And be it further resolved, that any material changes to the terms and conditions of the contracts, agreements, documents and other instruments hereby approved by the Board of Trustees shall be submitted to the university Board of Trustees for its consideration and approval. The explanation is as follows. The university is committed to ensuring compliance with federal, state and local regulations and ethical standards regarding all aspects pertaining to the responsible conduct of research and is determined it is necessary and appropriate to retain a law firm to assist the university in the resolution of this matter.
I make a motion to add item number two to our agenda. May I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Uh, all of those in favor of adding?
Aye.
Item number two has been added. Uh, I'd like to move item number two. May I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion on this item? We'll now move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions?
I don't think.
That item has been approved with one abstention. Um, I'd like to, before we adjourn, we need five more minutes in executive session. So I now move that this meeting reconvene in executive session pursuant to Article VII, Section 105 of the Public Officers' Law to discuss matters pertaining to personnel, investigations and litigation. May I have a second?
Second.
All right, we are in executive session as soon as we finish.